Well, here we go.
Is this my official announcement?
Yeah, this is my share.
Well, every year.
I usually send out a reminder. I went, wow.
Well, because it's January four. Usually it's.
I have to wait for that end of the year, but I could have done it on Monday. Could have done it yesterday.
See, uh, has he given any something to late open at the courthouse tomorrow? Just because. The schools have all done it now and it's a blizzard, so.
Where? Just over there.
No, I know.
How are you? Very good. You're fine. Happy New Year.
But that gives them sign to clean everything out of here.
Wow, I wondered if it.
Good morning, ladies.
Morning.
Side closed for the day.
I see that.
I get.
It went, and I wanted to make more you to you, not your group.
So, uh, this, uh.
Everything.
I can attend.
Hopefully two minutes. As long as it takes me to spit out the word. Yeah.
Just a formality.
And Dave, I think.
Forty, but I didn't have.
Yeah, I got a couple of things.
Just never know when it's gonna be strongly.
I don't know. Sometimes you just never know. Like then. That was my, that was my class, all the schools.
The baby.
Like, yeah, yeah. Day before the little boy.
Do you know that?
You didn't notice.
Okay.
No. My old. No, one or three. Yeah, one girl. Yeah, so.
Guys, I don't.
It's like a so warming up to it.
Okay.
Holy shit, honey.
Are you tired?
This is real.
Yeah, you're getting closer.
I'm not a late model.
I am. You need to kind of, you know, fourth kid. You're like, you know what to do.
Ooh, I'm gonna cry.
Yeah, no. There's three sisters.
Uh, well, he isn't right here.
Okay.
He's fine. Just let him pass a little bit. He's right on it, you know. She doesn't work.
Uh, I'm sure the older.
There's two sets of minutes. She didn't give it to you. Never. Lock the door if somebody.
Well, she's probably not there anymore, so we'll get the next one.
Fourteen and then six.
Have two.
Yeah, he's still around. Fourteen year old, he disappeared pretty quick, too.
Well, I think, yeah.
But no, they're both good.
Yeah, they're.
We try not to.
Starting to give me the time.
Well, one's there again.
Yeah.
Sure.
So there's, um.
He's doing even. Yeah.
You don't know that she's on.
You know, yeah, her car wasn't here when I came in.
Oh.
I guess we're, maybe we're going to end it by here anymore.
I'm the weatherman.
We're looking for.
Do it.
So we have the motion now. Are we need to amend the agenda? Okay, where's that come? Amend the agendas to add some.
Cause you've got miles and thousands. All you see is.
Didn't even think of that. Raffle permits. Good job. Last week. You're wrong.
There you go.
Yeah. Speak aloud if I can hear you. Yeah. Give yourself a beat by work things decided on. Thanks. Yeah, no, no, well, that was a pile of people. Did you go to his deal?
Things have gone downhill since I left.
I didn't go there till it was after eight. And, uh. It was standing on a little bit. You know, the guy. Well, yeah.
I mean, really.
Super awesome. A fast dog, my.
So we got your mics on?
Yeah.
Grand Forks County Commissioner, under order. January fourth, twenty twenty-two. Uh. All future of the present and fifty-eight is appearing. Zoom. Uh, first matter before the board is. That's been brought to my attention that we actually have two separate minutes. One was related to the opioid mitigation settlement. And so I'll need a motion to approve both. That's a minute. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Uh, next is the order of the agenda. And we have, I have one addition. We need to add an application for a raffle permit. Let's see. Let, let's just take care of that right after the consent agenda. So let's make that like sixty, sixty or something. Yeah, that motion.
Motion.
Motion. If all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that'll be sixty. Uh. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the order of the agenda at this point?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign, order, the agenda is approved. Designation of parliamentarian.
I will make a motion that, um, if anyone should be our parliamentarian.
Okay, we have a second of that?
Second.
We'll give that to.
There you go.
Your pitch. You'll have to speak, speak up, Cynthia. We can hardly hear you.
Yeah.
You're kind of in a barrel, but you know you're with us. Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Uh, then to adopt Roberts rules of order. We have a motion for that. So moved. Motion by Commissioner Ross. Second by Commissioner. Dom, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Uh, Roberts rules of order are adopted. Approval of the consent agenda, does anyone have any item they would like pulled, please?
Only a motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Ingham. All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda is passed. Next, we have the addition, the raffle permit, which has been submitted to us. Mr. McCann, do you want to come up here for just a minute? Okay, this is out at the airbase, JR Rockers Northern Lights Club. It's going to be. Tell that, who is the beneficiary of the raffle?
It goes towards the annual awards that we hold every year. Like to highlight, uh, for years prior, all the good things at the M D O N base. So it's going to get towards food, it's going to get towards their hardware decorations, uh, just the annual awards committee in general. That's coming up soon, right? Correct. We're gonna hold it February twenty fifth. Isn't it strange you look at that or?
If you look at it, I think, it's all right for you. Uh, can we have a motion to approve the raffle permit?
Moved. Time to research. I'll say it.
All right, motion, uh, second to approve the raffle permit at the Air Force Base. Uh, any, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Moved.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I will make the ten dollars. Do you have that? And then you can call me tomorrow and get your number for your permit.
Right now.
Dollars, yes.
Go ahead and sign on this.
I don't have change, but I think I might.
We'll get anybody got change for a twenty year.
I have, I have it right here. Excellent. Who's a gentleman right there. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Next, we have public health. If, uh, he's got added in.
I have to go back in because.
I apologize for the delay. I was trying to have the precious data I can for the commission. That looks right. All right, Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Michael Douglas of Grand Forks Public Health here to give a COVID nineteen update, and we'll just map a little bit. So, next, next slide. There we go. Uh, so looking at where we're at compared to, uh, last week and compared to the last time I came and visited with the commission. Uh, we've seen a very significant change in the number of cases at, uh, Grand Forks County that's carried out even past, uh, one-one with this, uh, when these numbers were run. Uh, so we've seen an almost doubling in the percent positivity rate, um, as well as, uh, increase, significant increase in the number of new cases in Grand Forks County. Uh, what we haven't seen, um, has been an increase in hospitalizations. Our hospitalizations are, uh, are on Christmas time. Actually, they go down. Um, and have, uh, been staying down, uh, right now, but we've seen a big increase in cases despite our testing being pretty high. Next slide. Uh, what we're seeing as an increase in cases is, uh, being reflective, uh, throughout North Dakota, particularly our pure counties. So. Cass County has been kind of the leader on this. Uh, they, their case rate is well over, uh, a hundred cases per hundred thousand population. Grand Forks hit eighty-eight per cases per hundred thousand population, and that number is going to go up tomorrow again based off of, um, the number of positives that we've been seeing today, uh, thus far. So that number is in about the eighties, so we'll be seeing that number go, uh, the overall case rate go up. The increase that we're seeing in, uh, cases is really reflective of what we've been seeing in other places as Omicron has come into the area. I don't have specific data on Omicron in Grand Forks County. Um, you know, hearing from, uh, the state and some of their, uh, surveillance in other counties, uh, particularly on the eastern side of the state. A lot of what they're seeing in like wastewater and the sequencing and testing is Omicron right now compared to the western side of the state where it's a little bit, uh, slower. So. Everything points towards what's going on in Grand Forks right now is probably reflective of Omicron. Next slide. Uh, just comparing where we've been at with the increase in, uh, percent positivity, uh, from December first to, um, today, uh, we've seen, you know, multi-point, you know. Three to five point increases in that percent positivity compared to early December, which, um, you definitely stands out, um, particularly in Grand Forks County and Cass County. Next slide. Uh, where we're seeing those cases are primarily in younger, um, age groups. Um, surprisingly, uh, much of the fall and early winter, the twenty to twenty-nine age group has had a relatively low case burden. Which is not what I expected with, uh, the college and things like that. Um, but what we've been seeing now in the past week and a half has been a lot of cases in that twenty to twenty-nine age group, which is surprising because, uh, you know, classes are out of session and things like that. So younger age groups in that basically twenty to, you know, roughly, uh, forty, fifty age group, um, have been seeing a kind of disproportionate rise in the overall case count. Next slide. Uh, and just comparing what we're seeing in, uh, North Dakota compared to other countries and the United States as a whole. Um, you know, I felt pretty confident last time I visited with the commission, uh, that we were going to see a relative delay in Omicron coming to Grand Forks County compared to what our experience has been previously. I was definitely wrong on that, um, and we've been definitely surprised. Well, um, you know, one spot in particular that I wanted to point out on this graph was the green at the bottom and, uh, for South Africa. So that's where Omicron was first identified at. They saw an increasing cases, then they saw rapid decrease in cases, but the, the increase in cases, you know, does not match anywhere near what we're seeing. Um, in a lot of the countries right now, including the United States that are seeing lots of, of cases. Next slide. One thing that they have talked about, though, and you may have heard in the news, is there's been a decoupling between COVID cases and hospitalizations. So with the Omicron variant, they're finding that it, uh, might be less virulent and might cause mild or illness, um, you know, which is a, a very good thing. The problem is that it's more effective. So what we're seeing right now is this huge spike in cases, and we're also seeing an increase in hospitalizations. I don't think that the hospitalizations are going to match anywhere near what has previously happened. You're, we aren't seeing that certainly around here, but, uh, you know, it's not pointing towards that. But there is a chance that we're going to still see strain on the hospital system, uh, you know, despite this, because of the quick increase in the number of cases. One benefit that we're seeing right now with, uh, with Omicron is that it does seem to be more like, uh, you know, more like a brief storm rather than something that's lasting for a long time. So. You know, a lot of predictions or early predictions that I've been hearing from some experts has been that, you know, we might expect Omicron to be pretty well settled out by, uh, February. So it's positives there. Next slide. So moving over to vaccination, uh, we are still making progress on our sixty percent goal, uh, slower than expected, but we're still, um, you know, we're still pointing towards it. We have less than two hundred people now to, uh, get started with the vaccine series to get us to sixty percent. Um, and we saw a lot of people to finish up some of the people in yellow on there, but we are still making progress. It's slow, but sure. Um, and we still have the groups that, you know, we really want to get vaccinated, but, um, you know, positives all around. The CDC did, uh, change their vaccine guidance. They allowed twelve to fifteen year olds now to get boosted, as well as people to get boosted. You know, at five months instead of six months after the primary series, so that first two doses. Next slide. So to, you know, start wrapping things up, I just wanted to remind the commission and anybody else here, what we can do to reduce our COVID risk, um, you know. What steps you can take or, you know, what, what steps you can choose from even a menu if you don't want to take all these steps to, uh, to reduce your COVID risk. Getting upstate on COVID vaccination is a, is a great way to help reduce your COVID risk. We have, uh, vaccine clinics at the Grand City Mall. Tuesdays or Fridays, now we did change those hours in the new year. They start at twelve thirty, some days they end at four, some days they have that six thirty at the Grand City Mall. Um, improving mask quality. So, um, you know, a surgical mask works pretty good. Clock masks don't work as good, but the gold standard really is in a ninety-five mask. Uh, particularly in a setting where you might be masked and another person may not be. Uh, we do offer those at the, uh, public health building on the third floor. You can just come up. We have them on a, on the desk. You can, you know, grab a package of five, and we have been reminding, we put out a news release reminding of the availability of those masks. We've had those available since August. The demand has been there since August. It, it slows, you know, waxes and wanes, but, uh, we've still been providing it. You know, the things you can do, reducing transmission, transmissible moments. So thinking about places where, you know, you might be at high risk, close, uh, social settings, uh, eating settings, things like that. And, uh, you know, the other thing you can do is consider frequent testing. You can now get a two test kit for, uh, the binax test, the same ones that we do at the High Performance Center. You can get those for fourteen dollars at Walmart now. So testing is getting more available and cheaper. And then finally, if you do get COVID, uh, consider early treatment, particularly if you're at an increased risk for, um, severe illness. Uh, so there are some new antiviral treatments that have come onto the market, and they've determined that one of the monoclonal antibodies still does, uh, work against the Omicron variant. So there are options if you do get, uh, sickness COVID, particularly if you're at higher risk. So, um, with that, the next slide. Uh, you know, the good part is right now we aren't seeing a lot of hospitalizations, but this increase has been very sudden. Um, it's been very steep and it is, um, you know, going to be something that we're going to have to watch very closely. Also with that is the increase in personal positivity. And adding that together with people that can now test at home instead of having to come in, um, come in somewhere and get identified, um, as being COVID positive. It means that there's probably a lot of COVID activity going on in the community right now. We have lots of opportunities to reduce your, your risk. And, you know, I highlighted those in the last slide, but, um, the next, uh, couple of months, um, are going to be fairly telling, especially if we keep seeing a high case burden on what the, what that will do to hospitalizations. I hope it stays relatively flat because that shows that we're, if our hospitalizations stay relatively flat and our case counts increase, that's good, that's going to be a good. Prog, you know, prognosis for on, you know, what the world's going to look like with COVID and how we're going to manage that in the future. So. Yeah, if that doesn't happen, you know, this is just going to be another reiteration. That's going to be a challenge for us. With that, I am open to any questions.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Chairman. This is a rapid test. So are you finding if they're accurate? Uh, are there some false negatives that you have to worry about or what?
Uh, Commissioner Ingham, um, it does sound like the, uh, rapid test, particularly the binax now test, which are what we use for, um, antigen testing, um, have been very, or, you know, have been accurate enough to, that we maintain a lot of confidence in them. Uh, that said, you know, they also say with antigen testing, the best, you know, the most effective way to use antigen testing is to use it serial or in serial manner. So, you know, multiple tests or testing frequently, that's when it works the best. But if you're, if you have symptoms and you test positive, you can be pretty confident that you actually have COVID.
So I.
Go ahead.
So with the, the quick test that they can go in and purchase, so. Is that like, you see a pregnancy test, and you know what that's like, but, but other than it turns a different color. Does, is, is that what happens with, with, uh? These two, huh? Is that what happens with these as well? The only, I guess where I'm going with that is that our numbers, it would seem like, would be skewed because there might be people that are testing, and if. That doesn't get reported, then, then we kind of, I mean, those numbers don't really mean anything anymore because they're not.
So, Commissioner, not, uh, answering the question in two parts, uh, it is actually very similar to a pregnancy test. So the, the concept is the exact same. So you have a, like a reagent, um, it's just some drops that you put on a little card. You swab your nose and you dip it in that little card and then that connects it to the reagent and then you close it, and then it looks just like a pregnancy test where it goes up that paper and then it's one line for no and two lines for yes.
So, but it, it never goes anywhere and gets reported, and that's where the numbers will be skewed then because they're going to reflect that.
Correct. So i- an individual could choose to, uh, you know, to, to not report themselves as being positive with a home test. That is a risk that we take. The benefit, though, with home testing is that then people can, you know, have peace of mind or, you know, relative peace of mind and test themselves frequently and hope. You know, if you have a sniffle or something like that, you know, one of those things where you're just a little, a tiny bit paranoid, but not enough to actually go and do something about it. You can assess yourself quickly and have that reassurance. So there's a net benefit to it. The other thing that does get people into our doors to get, um, to get tested and get, you know, kind of. In, you know, verified and everything like that is for, in a player letter or things like that. So that does help, um, on our end with getting, uh, you know, getting more people tested. But we run the risk and so that, that, that adds on to everything else that we're seeing right now with the increase in cases, and there's probably more cases that aren't identified.
Yes. Well, some kids or food in our community or not?
I, I have a little bit of knowledge of flu, so, um, you know, I'm a lot more limited, but, um, essentially what we're seeing right now with flu is a pretty hefty increase compared to last year. Um, with flu, so, um, you know, it's kind of going hand in hand with, with COVID, um, you know, towards mid-December, they're seeing a ton more flu than COVID. Um, you know, that's changing now. It's kind of switching back to COVID being predominant, but flu has been, um, you know, kind of rearing itself we had this year that we've been noticing. Um, particularly, you know, acute care clinics and stuff like that have been reporting a large burden, including our health officer, so.
About hospitalizations because of flu.
Uh, that I don't have the numbers off the top of my head on, so I'd, yeah, I'd be more speculating on that, but I haven't heard it, I haven't heard of a massive amount. But with hospitals, it, it sounds so crazy because it, it's relatively low numbers of people that are hospitalized specifically for COVID. But then there's people, no thanks. There's, uh, there's people after, or, you know, that are still hospitalized after they're considered recovered from COVID that are still related to COVID. And hospitals aren't built for massive amounts of, you know, extra patients. Um, and so that, that all makes it really difficult to make hospital capacity a really kind of precarious thing. Um, on a day-to-day basis. So, uh, hospitalizations this season are at forty-nine statewide. Um, and right towards the end of the year, it, it kind of peaked up, uh, with fifteen hundred cases, um, in the last week of, uh, twenty twenty. So it, it's definitely happening in the community, and that's just, uh, oh, that is a combination of influence, A and E, so.
Sorry, I have one more.
That's all right. Go ahead. Just keep going until you're done.
Yeah, I know. So, but it's another flu question, and I get it if you can't answer it, okay, but, um. With, with the, some of us got some shots early on, and then there was some. Information that came out that maybe that. The flu changed and it, that vaccine might not be. Work on that. Is that, is, should you get another vaccine or are you covered?
Uh, so with flu shots, they, they have to make a, a best guess based on what the predominant strains are and things like that. And so sometimes that, that doesn't match up. Getting an additional dose generally doesn't mean that you're going to get protected against those extra kind of strains on it. So. Generally, no, on an additional, um, on additional dose, um, and it remains to be seen what kind of impact, um, you know, that, not quite having it perfect, uh, perfectly targeted will have. So your risk is probably still higher right now with, um, with COVID versus the flu.
You have a question?
No, thank you very much.
Thanks for all you guys do.
Exequilization.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, today I'm here to talk about uncollectible mobile home taxes. So there are times when people don't pay their mobile home taxes. And when this happens, our office works with the sheriff's department. And then there are times that that office cannot collect taxes either because the owners either are not able to be located. Or the mobile home is taken off the lot. So after the sheriff's department has responsive all measures to locate the mobile home matter. Then deemed it necessary to cancel these uncollectible mobile home taxes. And I've attached the letter from Michelle Olson from the Grand Forks County Sheriff's Office. And with that, uh, she did work with Corporal Ron Nord. So according to North Dakota Central Code fifty-seven dash twenty-two dash eleven, cancellation of uncollectible taxes. At its regular meeting in January of each year, the county board of commissioners shall examine the sheriff's report on personal property taxes. And compare the same with the tax list of the auditor and treasurer. And the plan set report may cancel such taxes out the board is satisfied cannot be collected. The items of tax so canceled must be noted on the tax list of the treasurer and auditor. The auditor forthwith shall make a report to the sheriff of the tax items canceled and same must be credited to the county. I am requesting that the attached list of uncollectible mobile home taxes be canceled. You have more questions?
Looks appropriate. Most of these trailers aren't there any longer. One of them dates back to two thousand and six, so I don't think we're gonna find them.
Right.
So can we get a motion to, yes, Commissioner?
I'll just, I'll make a motion that we cancel all these mobile home taxes and the total on the four thousand nine hundred and five thirty. Showing, uh, the attachment to the sheriff's department.
Maybe we have a second?
A second.
Session from Commissioner Don. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
That operative, eh?
That's all.
Okay, county engineers next. Yes.
The documents in the green notes that help with things that we're collecting with the act on that.
I think that was, that was part of the consent agenda.
Put in there?
Yeah. Always good to keep me on my toes, so no problem. Okay, Mr. West, what have you got for us today?
Well, I have two things on the agenda and one popped up today. One that popped up today is Nelson just called me a couple hours ago and said, she got in the mail contract for our paving job for next year, next year, this year. This is the project last meeting, the group resolution contract and, and the, and the dollar amount. And next river, the contractor sent over the contract and the contract bond certi for approval. Now, I predominantly looked through it quick and would recommend approval. I have not had legal, looked through it at all, but I would, I would ask for preliminary approval after Ms. Wong's every use it and if it's okay with her in that. And it would be chairman's signature and auditor's signature on the contract and certi acknowledgement would be state's attorney and attorney.
Any questions or motions?
Or if the board would want, we can, next week agenda to.
To each now, but, or, thank you. Yeah.
But I guess I would make a motion to, to approve that request with the auditor's signature and the chair's signature with the approval of the state's attorney.
Okay, we have a motion to approve contingent on a going with appropriate signatures, contingent on the state's attorney's office agreeing to it. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Noff, any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. My first regular item here is something we've been, our department's been thinking about. Well, for at least, I've been at department seven and a half years and I've been thinking about it for six and seriously for probably four is the classification of our equipment operators. I've, I've brought this topic to the board before and we've talked about it and, and I guess we, myself and HR, we finally negotiated something that we can all agree on and it would be a good process is, is that in, in a nutshell, after our operators are hired as a, as a two, if they successfully complete two years of time with the colony, they would be eligible to be promoted. And anything that comes up in the meantime, as far as performance issues, discipline issues are dealt with accordingly. This, currently our department has twenty-two operators, seventeen are threes, it's great nine and five are operator teams. That's created eight. So this proposal right now would, would affect. We didn't hire anybody last year. Luckily, we hired five guys and five operators in twenty twenty. So if this policy was, it was, was approved, it would affect one in January, three in August, the morning of September. But yeah, it would, it would allow our operators a clear way of being promoted in the department because right now to be promoted up. Basically, one guy has to leave and then a position's open and then we promote somebody from within and then hire a new queue. That's how that works. But the job, the duties don't change. That's a lot of the frustration. It still be the same thing. If we need in the mold, they mold, if they need to blow, so they blow snow and it, it would be very similar to how the corrections and you know, send them with, with handle their staff.
So.
Services does that as well?
Yeah. So you know, so really you get twenty-two operators, but only seventeen classifications of operator three, which means if those guys keep working for us for another ten years, those five that are below them are going to be stuck in twos, even though they're doing the same job, right?
Exactly.
Getting notch in human resources, is that right? In human resources, you're on board with this?
As long as he figures out his budget.
He's, he's kind of a magician at coming up with numbers. So.
We don't never hire it. Operator one, they all come in at operator two, and then two years later they'll go to a three. Not, our thought process was it gives them the opportunity to go through two full seasons. So if you have last year when we had six snowflakes and this year they've done how much plowing? Yeah.
Can we get a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve the, the proposed classification for operators that operator twos after two years.
Correct.
Operator three with that is equal to that or we think that.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I heard, I actually heard Commissioner Peach. Thank you, Commissioner Peach. We have a, a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. You're good to go on that one.
Thank you. Uh, my next item is looking for a little guidance from the board here and how we, how we want to proceed. Not necessarily a specific motion, but when we do our culver bidding, traditionally we do it on an annual basis. Solicite quotes in the late winter, spring, have a contract, those prices are locked in for a year. Well, last year in particular with steel culverts, the they had, True North Steel was our supplier and they had massive price increases and they tried to increase price on us last summer, but we held them with our contract and didn't let them, didn't voluntarily take the price increase. But they're asking for a six-month contract rather than one year. And bring this to the board now because we'll bring you advertising that proposal soon and I'd like to figure that out before we advertise it. I guess my thoughts are it could go either way. The, I don't have a real strong opinion, but the risk with the twelve-month contract is, is they're gonna put a higher price in there because they don't know what the price for raw steel is going to be in August. So they're going to be conservative with it and we're going to pay more than what the price is today because they're scared what's going to happen in the future. It just requires us to solicit halfway through the year and then we advertise and give quotes.
The other thing is they may not even bid. Unless they think it's going to be that volatile. If you hold them to a one-year bid, they may not bid it.
That's, could happen.
I wouldn't.
Yeah. I know they, you know, their, their price increases were quite substantial and we did place a board related in the year for a bunch of player ads because we knew prices were going up and you know, I don't think they're real happy about that, but we stopped up a little bit because new prices were going up, but. Here.
You know, yeah, one, just one kind of, the other thing is, would we be better off if it's every six months? It's almost like we're buying it on the open market.
Yeah. I mean, it depends on year of course, but we, we go through half a dozen semi-loads a year.
Okay.
Frankly, most of the metal core that gets used, it goes to township projects. We tend to use more of the plastic side and every once in a while we'll, we'll get bids on concrete pipes. And so the curveball of this now is concrete pipe is the same price or cheaper than metal. So.
And if you get the money from the state at all, you're probably going to spend even more on culvert's problem, I guess. Yeah. I interrupted you, Commissioner. Go ahead.
No, but what's the, the only question I have is what, what's another source? Are there numerous bids on these? Or is this kind of the people we use all the time because no one else can do it?
Oh, there's two manufacturers of metal pipe in our area. There's True North Steel and Contact. Traditionally, True North Steel gets our bid because their facilities in Fargo or contacts manufacturing facilities, either Wyoming or Minneapolis, and their truck ethos just get to be too much. But they have bitter product. Some years they contact, some years they bid, some years they don't. Plastic pipe right now is the only one that bids, there's this ADS, man, Buxton. Concrete, there's two, there's Fortera and Hancock. They're, Fortera is in, in Holly, Minnesota or Menoken, which is real outside this mark. And Hancock is in Hancock, Minnesota or Devil's Lake, they can make something. So concrete market's a little more competitive. But if the board had an opinion one way or another, I entertain that.
The question I have is, you said you're not requesting a motion. Wouldn't we have to give you permission to have your contract? Sure, would you?
Yeah. Yeah, I thought you, I didn't notice that. I thought you were here to ask approval of that.
Yeah, we can, I'm not sure. I'm here to get the board's opinion, you know, get some guidance on which way to go and, and if, if we, the motion's appropriate, absolutely.
Have, have you talked to any of these suppliers about bidding twice here?
The request came from True North Steel.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that was included in this packet here is there were some emails back from the summer on the price increasing increases and then this December twenty-first, they specifically asked for a six-month window instead of a year.
I just think if they're going to lose money, they're just not going to bid it or else they're going to bid it so high, we're going to overpay for it. So it's, I don't have any problems with doing it, but what does the board wish?
I'm going to make a motion to approve going with the six-month contract. Price deal for True North.
Or, well, no, whoever, on the bits.
Oh, on all bids?
Yeah. And all of it.
Yeah. I'm not necessarily correct.
Okay.
One second then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go with the six-month bid process on Culver's product, products. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes.
Thank you. We'll go six months and see what happens. Yeah. Thank you. That's all I have. Any questions?
And if this supply problem ever turns around, we can always go back through here. The way it was for decades, so. Okay. Next is Mr. Ford, Director of Administration.
Mister Chairman, I have nothing to report today.
State's Attorney, Mental Health Services contract.
So that'd have been an update to the sub-agenda under the state's attorney's report. I do not have a mental service contract ready for the board's consideration today. But just by way of update, Darla Schuman's law firm has served as the defense attorney on the civil commitment pieces for many years. She's done an excellent job on the contract, but she notified us mid-December that she would no longer be able to continue on that contract just because of some personal circumstances. Her backup, because she is a solo practitioner, has always, or has recently been a Swanson Barca law firm. And so I reached out to that firm to see if they would be interested in taking over that contract. They indicated they would and they started January first. The details of the verbiage of the contract we're still working on, so I don't have the contract to present to the board today. But as soon as that is available, I'll bring it to the board. So there is no gap in services. So that's kind of the update on, on that contract. On, on a, on a different topic. The Human Service Zone has a general assistance policy. It's essentially a memorandum of understanding between the Salvation Army, St. Joseph's Social Care, Red River Valley Community Action, Grand Forks Police Department and the Human Service Zone that essentially is their Cubs program. It's assistance provided to needy families, is my understanding. This is something that's been in place for a number of years, but has recently been updated. I visited with Mister Hooper about this agreement. I have no legal concerns and he's requesting the chair's signature on this document.
What does that mean to the county?
What Mister Hooper has shared with me is that his department through the state funds has six thousand dollars that they contribute to a joint fund. The fiscal agent is Red River Valley Community Action and my understanding from speaking with him is prior to having this MOU in place, they had some people that sought funds from a variety of agencies and that depleted the funds from many agencies. And so instead they pooled their funds together. So it's one point of contact. So then they can better monitor what each family is getting so not to double up or miss anyone and, and best utilize those funds. So it's six thousand dollars that's already in the Human Service Zone's budget that they intend to contribute to this. It's already been approved by all the other agencies. And what Mister Hooper stated is that this has been in place since before he was in his current position. It's just simply updating the MOU. And I have a copy here, listen to it, copy if anyone wishes to see.
So are you asking for action on this then?
Yes, Mister Hooper is asking for the chair's signature on this document.
Okay.
Signature on the MOU.
Okay, the motion, second by Commissioner Ross, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Actually, it's a small but.
Yeah.
Okay, is that all you have?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports. Commissioner Peach, we'll start with you. Anything?
Mister Chairman.
I couldn't, we couldn't hear you.
I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Anoff, anything?
I have nothing to report. I don't have my schedule last year, so.
But I think it was a pretty quiet two weeks, so I have nothing.
Okay, I just was informed today that Earl Howgan is going to retire. And they will be looking for a new executive director. That's all I got.
And other than a brick meeting this morning, which is pretty normal that Commissioner and I attended, that's all I've got. So and we're working on some, to find, planning and zoning, we're going to find one more person at least, so we're on that. Unfinished new business. Portfolio board assignments, I think they were all passed out. Commissioner and graciously. One. Said they were his people, so he should be happy over there. I had to jump right in. So thank you, Commissioner again for doing that. Correspondents? Do we have any? No correspondence? We are down to, oh, I know, I got one, one thing and it's been, this is different, but I'll, I'll bring up, yeah. I've had inquiries today and then I've got a hundred reports or not a hundred, I've got half a dozen reports from this. Kerry Galls, or Galls rather, relative to closures. Weather impending, which sounds fairly dramatic. So the real question is, do we want to close the courthouse or delay opening until ten o'clock tomorrow morning? And I do know that Northeast is doing that, the school district is, and the air force base is proactively doing it on essential personnel or for, for kids.
Well, on Facebook, there's a lot of them that are, that are doing it.
Commissioner.
Well, the question I have about that is, would affect courthouse on anything that's going on as far as trial?
Well, it always affects them no matter what, I mean, our, our, we do it, but it might be easier for them to plan if we do it now versus six o'clock in the morning.
Raise that question in case Ms. Swanson would know if something was going on.
I think it's good to be proactive and, and, uh, you know, the, our people are safe and they can plow the streets and roads, whatever. So the other thing is, is it's, it'll be light when they're trying to travel to the ward, so.
And the other thing, if they decide to close for the day, they have time to decide.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
Yeah.
That's what I ran into when I was.
Yeah, good point, so would there be a motion from anyone on the board? Motion to delay opening.
Delay opening of the county buildings.
Until ten AM. And we have a motion, do we have a second?
Say again.
Second by Commissioner Ross, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, takes care of that issue.
Now, just one other thing.
Yep.
Andy would, um, put red, be the one that would put that out to the employees.
That'd be the county commission, they made the motion.
Okay, because it needs to go on a code red.
Okay.
So all goes out to all.
Okay, can you take care of that then?
Okay.
Appreciate that. It'll be nice if it doesn't come at like four thirty in the morning. Okay, uh, anything further? Do we have a motion to adjourn, so move, motion, do we have a second? Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.
My attorney every meeting since I got on the board.
Sort of a game.
So what I missed is that when Roberts rules came out, then Mister Ball, you always arguing that.
Yeah, and I sometimes agree with that.
Michelle, may I speak to you before you go down again?